To the council. These are informational presentations only and nothing will be voted on at the time of the presentation. Presenters are not time limited. There are two times when all other visitors will be able to speak to council. The first is during the visitor's section of the agenda and the second is during any public hearing regarding an agenda item. During the visitor's section, anyone may speak to council about any topic, whereas the public hearings regarding specific agenda items allow you to make comments for council to consider before they make a decision on that topic. Whether you wish to speak during any public hearing or the visitor's section, the following rules of order will apply. One, only one person should speak at a time. Be respectful of the person speaking and wait to speak until it is your turn. Two, anyone speaking must do so from the podium and speak into the microphone.
Three, you must first state your name and provide your address in writing to the city clerk before beginning your comments.
Four, all speakers will be given five minutes to make their comments to the council. The mayor or council may have additional questions for speakers after this five-minute period. Five, all comments should be addressed to the mayor and council. Six, if you have questions about existing city processes, programs, or policies, or if you need assistance from staff on any issue, please contact City Hall during normal business hours and we'll be happy to assist you or answer any questions you may have at that time. The public hearing is designed to provide the public an opportunity to provide testimony and information to the mayor and council regarding the decisions they may be considering. Keep in mind this meeting will be recorded and livestreamed with video and audio. Therefore, all comments relevant to this meeting must be spoken into a microphone. Otherwise, video viewers will not be able to hear you. In the case of a closed session or technical difficulties, some meetings or portions of meetings may not actually be recorded or streamed. The use of cell phones during council meetings is discouraged, so please silence all devices now. Thank you for watching and thank you for engaging with the City of Nixa. The meeting will begin shortly.
Here.
Aaron Peterson.
Here.
Darlene Graham.
Here.
Zern Vess.
Here.
All right, one last chance. Do you want to do it? All right, please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, before I get started, yes. Oh, we're streaming, cool. Thank you. Which makes this even more sad. I feel like he did this on purpose. No, just kidding. Before I get started, I do have some little bit sad news, but also great news. You know, it's always, it's always difficult to lose an employee and someone who's such a huge part of your team, but it's very easy when you know that it's going to make things better for them and it's what they want to do. So, Mr. Drew Douglas will be leaving us here in about two weeks. Wish him the best of luck on everything. I know you'll do great. I will say that, you know, coming into this, this job role, I was never really a, a public speaker and was definitely, and have always been kind of an HR nightmare and a PR nightmare. So I'm pretty sure every time I spoke, Drew was on the edge of his seat wondering what I was going to say and what he was going to have to do to fix it after I said it. But, you know, he worked with all the council members. He's worked with me numerous times. And him and Jimmy's wife, Sandy, have all been really good at saying, Jared, you can't say that. And I appreciate it and I think, you know, there's going to be things that I'm going to use that Drew has taught me for the rest of my life. Just can't tell you how much I appreciate everything you've done for myself and the City of Nixa. Mr. Lyles?
Sure. Very well said, Mayor. And I'll, I'll just add to it that, you know, for those who don't know, when Drew was hired, he was hired as a PIO, wasn't actually hired as a director. He was able, because he grew that department really from almost nothing to what it is today. Was promoted to director level, added Macy as an employee, and really made that department shine for the whole city. And, you know, I'll, I'll say that, you know, Drew was really instrumental in a lot of things and a lot of the successes that we've accomplished, the strategic plan for one of those, branding for another. I, I'll say that the engagement with the community and the level of transparency is even higher today because of the communications that that department has done, that Drew has overseen. So, thank you, Mr. Douglas. We truly appreciate it.
And I do have a gift for you in my office, so. Didn't want to bring it out here. Nothing bad, come on. Geez, people. Moving on to our visitor's section. We do not have anyone signed up, but if you would like to speak, you may do so at this time. You feeling all right? We good? Okay. I will close the visitor's section. So, moving on to first reading Council Bill 2024-12.
First reading Council Bill Number 2024-12, an ordinance of the council of the City of Nixa amending Chapter 12, Article 4, and Chapter 117, Article 4 of the Nixa City Code for the purpose of modifying the city's regulations related to garage sales, presenting as Planning and Development Director Scott Goppi.
Mayor, council, good evening. This is probably the most controversial ordinance I've bring to you lately. That is a joke. This is simply just some code language cleanup. In 2022, we authorized the second citywide garage sale. Our code tends to repeat itself in numerous different chapters and sections, so in Chapter 117, we found one of those redundancies and this is us removing that redundancy and linking it back to Chapter 12 where we authorized the second citywide garage sale. Citizens will still have their two guard sales or garage sales that they're allowed and then also the two citywide garage sales. Chapter 117 mainly only mentioned the one citywide garage sale. So, removing that redundancy, linking it back to the code section that actually addresses it, hopefully this will alleviate any of those issues if we were to modify it again in the future. This was read in front of the Planning and zoning commission. Nobody approached the commission. They voted unanimously six-zero to recommend approval. Staff does recommend approval as it will clean up our code a little bit. If you've got any questions, I'm available.
Any questions? Thank you, Mr. Goppi.
Thank you.
I will open up the public hearing if you would like to speak on the citywide garage sales. There we are. There we are.
Just, just, my name is Ron Sanders. Yeah, I live here. Just wanted to mention that Mother's Day weekend is the controversial part of all of this and you'd probably win a lot of hearts and minds if we moved the springtime garage sale away from Mother's Day instead of causing a whole bunch of mothers to go through their garages and attics and setting up a garage sale, which is a lot of work, you know, finding everything that you need and that you want to get rid of and all that, doing all of your spring cleaning and all of that. I don't know if Mother's Day is the best time to do it, just putting that out there.
I know we have looked into different dates and there's always something else that is around those like two months there. It's extremely busy. I think there was even a survey done, what, two years ago?
Yeah, it's been a little bit, but we've looked at it several times. But you're right, Mayor, it's been a lot of other things and other weekends and we actually got some feedback from the public as well and it is split. I completely understand what Mr. Sanders is saying, but we also have a lot of public that is set because it's been that weekend for so long. Believe it or not, we have people travel from all over the United States. We actually have people fly here, believe it or not, for garage sale weekend. So, not to say we can't ever do it, it's just something we, we have looked at before.
So, there's a lot of husbands out there that should thank us because it gives all the moms something to do on Mother's Day and then we get the day off. I think we're having one too and I just have to watch the dogs, so I get a, I get a free pass.
Well, technically it's Mother's Day weekend, but not on Mother's Day.
Aren't we supposed to celebrate it all weekend though?
You can celebrate all you want to.
But, good point. Anybody else? All right, I will close the public hearing. Moving on, first reading Council Bill 2024-13.
First reading Council Bill Number 2024-13, an ordinance of the council of the City of Nixa amending the 2024 annual budget for the purpose of funding the purchase of a vehicle for the police department, presenting is Police Chief Joe Campbell.
Mayor, council, this is going to seem a little out of order because of the way the agenda is laid out. I'll be talking about this position more in more detail in a resolution later, but for this part, we're going to be talking about a budgetary amendment to buy, potentially buy a vehicle that would be assigned to a DEA task force officer. So, in March of this year, we did get an unexpected opportunity to assign a person to the DEA task force. That's something that we've been trying to get done for many years within our department. We see the value in that, in that particular association with DEA and the benefits that can come from that. As part of this agreement, we have to provide a vehicle for this particular officer. Now, typically they, if you're a part of this task force, they do a lease agreement and we did quite a bit of research about potentially leasing that vehicle and, and with the intention of working with Enterprise Leasing, which is our current lease company. And they brought us four choices and none of them, which should ever be considered for a vehicle that we're going to use in this manner. So, with those being pretty bleak, we had to shift gears and look at potentially buying the vehicle instead. Now, the good news is we have impact fees and we're adding a vehicle, so this certainly qualifies as an appropriate expenditure. In the memo, you'll see that we have about $64,000 in impact fees, twenty, about 25 of which we have to spend this year. We've been saving it up for several years now, but there are $25,000 in that that have to be expended this year. And so, what I would like to do is request a budgetary amendment for $50,000 that would buy the vehicle and outfit it. And when I say 50,000, it's, it's honestly, it's up to 50,000 because once you go to a purchase situation, it kind of opens the, the door to quite a few different vehicles. And the traditional way of buying off the bid now is that you work with a state, a state bid that is basically a qualifying dealer and then you negotiate a price. And so, I can't give you an exact figure on what we're going to spend on that particular vehicle. Of course, the, the intention would be to put it on a schedule just like the lease and so we would monitor its mileage and we would potentially rotate that out, sell it and get a different vehicle, maybe on the, with Enterprise if they have some available options at the time, but we would try to maximize our return just like we would if we were leasing the vehicle. And so, that's the idea. Do you guys have any questions at this point about the vehicle?
So, do we hold the, pretty much all the financial responsibility on the vehicle, insurance and everything?
Yeah, so there, there is like an agreement, when you go into agreement with, for the task force, you do, they will do some light maintenance work and oil changes and then the money that would have been used for the lease, I am negotiating with them to remove that into salary. So, we're not actually going to miss out on that, it'll just be converted over to the salary line, so. And I can talk a little bit further about that when we get to the resolution about how that, that position lays out and how that's reimbursed. But, for our part, in this situation, we would own the vehicle, it would be ours, assigned to them to use and they would follow our rules and our policies.
Okay. And I'm trying to think of what not to ask that we'll cover later, so I'll just move it all to later. Any questions? Thank you, Chief. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing if you would like to speak on this.
Ron Sanders, live here again. Just want to remind everybody that in the alphabet soup of, of the federal government and, you know, federal government entities, the FBI has recently got into the habit of visiting citizens for their Facebook posts. So, when, when you crawl into bed with certain alphabet soup federal agencies, you have a tendency to get what they're giving and I would just be very careful that the ATF doesn't decide to do the same kind of things. But, yeah, the cautionary tale, I don't want the FBI or any of the other alphabet soup people coming to my house questioning my First Amendment freedoms, you know, because I posted something on Facebook that they didn't like. I don't know if that's going to happen here, but I just had to throw that out there.
Thank you, Mr. Sanders. I will actually say if that is a concern, the way that this works and I actually was friends with a guy who used to be a part of the one in Christian County and then he moved up and actually was on the governor's detail for a while. And I believe the chief of police in Ozark was also a part of that task force and this is mainly just drugs. So, it doesn't get into the, your social media post and, and everything, but it'll, there's a lot of benefits, which we can discuss that later, on having one of our officers be attached to that. So, we'll get into that in here in a little bit. Anyone else would like to speak? I will close the public hearing. All right, moving on to the resolutions. First up, Resolution 2024-18.
Resolution Number 2024-18, a resolution of the council of the City of Nixa authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with the United States Department of Justice Drug Enforcement Administration, DEA, to authorize the city's participation in a DEA task force, presenting is Police Chief Joe Campbell.
Mayor, council, now we can go into a little bit further about the actual position itself. What you have in front of you is an agreement, standard agreement to assign or, or attach a police officer from the Nixa Police Department to this DEA drug task force. The main purpose or goal of this task force is to disrupt illicit drug traffic in the greater Springfield metropolitan area and beyond because they go where the work is at and that sometimes takes them locally, but it also can take them far away. In this particular role, this officer will gather intelligence related to drug trafficking, the use of narcotics and dangerous drugs, and they're going to do that in a variety of methods using traditional investigative techniques and as well as undercover operations. Ultimately, with the result of the offender going to court at the, in the United States federal court system and with the state of Missouri's court system, criminal court system. The DEA is the one who actually heads this task force. It is a federally funded position through HIDA, which is High Intensity Trafficking Area, is what that HIDA stands for, and that is administered through the Missouri State Highway Patrol. They do break down and reimburse for this position with this grant and you can see that the approximate breakdown that is built out here on the memo is about 33,000 for, for salary. That would include that rollover potentially for that lease money that we spoke about earlier. Benefits reimbursement of about 12,700. They also will reimburse for fuel, cellphone, and overtime. Of course, you may add all those figures up and go, that's not the total amount that we would pay an officer for a yearly salary. This is true, so the remainder of his salary and benefits would be the responsibility of the Nixa Police Department, but I would contend that the benefits that we get from being in the task force would certainly outweigh the costs associated with, the uncovered cost from the grant itself. We can expect to be in this task force for approximately three to five years. It can go longer. We can reassign somebody. Of course, it's all subject to federal grants and, and being funded, but for us, they like to see a three to five-year commitment for the officer just because of the amount of, it's pretty labor intensive to get them up to speed for these intensive drug investigations. They will work out of the DEA office in Springfield, Missouri and as such be direct, day-to-day supervised by the DEA rack or the supervisor up there. There are a variety of municipal agencies and state agencies that are currently involved in this, so it's a, it's a truly a multi-jurisdictional task force and so we would just be joining them in that capacity. Another benefit of joining this ta, this task force with, with an agent and assigning a TFO or a task force officer is that we do have the potential to see a percentage of forfeiture money that is associated with these cases whenever they're successfully tried and convicted of, of a crime. So, if there are monies available from forfeiture, we would see that as long as our officer worked on that particular case. And so, a lot of times, within, within a short amount of time, the amount of money that we see in forfeiture could potentially make up for any differences that we see that, or deficiencies from the grant and then at, at some point, we go in the black, so to speak, and then we would be seeing money come in from that that could be used directly to help us with the budgetary things that we need to get done in the police department. So, it can actually be financially advantageous to be a part of the DEA task force. Of course, you know, anytime you join a federal task force or in a multi-jurisdictional task force, one has to say, well, how does it benefit Nixa directly? How, how does it help the citizens of Nixa? And we use a word, a word or a term, greater good, so, in, in that sense. By participating in a, in a drug task force, we're able to go after not just the end user, but we're looking at the next levels, you know, the, so you're looking at the, the people who are actually trafficking the drugs. You, you want the bigger fish, so to speak. And so, those have indirect impacts on our drugs and the things that we deal with here. It is nice to know that if you have a task force officer assigned, you do get to bear, you bring to, to the table some of the resources that the federal government can offer when you're doing other investigations and so many times, they can, they can do things and get things done. They have, you know, having a jurisdiction of the United States rather than just the City of Nixa, you can go and track down those leads, you can chase things down and the resources that are available certainly are beneficial to the city and to the Nixa Police Any questions about anything so far?
So, my first question is, I mean, in paragraph 15, it does talk about the, you know, the exiting the contract 30-day advance notice, but what, what would be the responsibility of the city if, say, the officer, it's a five-year agreement and the officer gets through two years and decides they're out and they want to quit? Are we required to get another officer or what happens then?
Well, it's, it's a mutually benef, I mean, it's a mutual contract and so the idea is that, you know, you know, if you have a task force position and it, and it's granted to your agency, typically what they'll do is they'll give you an opportunity to fill that if you'd like to fill that position again with a different officer. Same thing with rotation, you know, you, you don't want to leave a, an officer into a position where they're doing undercover work for multiple, multiple years. You do need to rotate, rotate them from that assignment on a periodic basis. But as far as, you know, whether we are required to fill that, we are not required to fill it, but certainly, most agencies, once they get their foot in the door, so to speak, with the, with the task force, they tend to covet those positions and that's why it's taken us so many years to get an opportunity to assign somebody because they just don't come open all that often. Agencies that are participating will always want to continue to participate.
Got you. And then, my other question, and this isn't necessarily about this contract, but you'll see where I'm going and I apologize for not letting you know in advance because you might not be able to pull the numbers out. You know, one thing is I don't think people realize the drug issues that we have in this area. They think, well, you know, Nixa's extremely safe and we don't have a lot of crime, we must not have any drugs. What does that look like in this area as far as, you know, lately, how much worse is it getting and, and not just how bad the drugs are getting, but what kind of drugs are now in the area that most people don't even know about because I think most people are pretty sheltered from that?
Sure. The one thing you have to remember about drugs in general and illicit drugs is that they don't know jurisdictional boundaries. And so, when you hear about seizures that, you know, on the I-44 corridor, which is just a few miles north of here, those drugs are intended to go to southwest Missouri, that, we're not isolated from that. It's not, they're going to come into our, into our jurisdiction as well. And so, that's one thing that I would always remind people is that when you look at the illicit drug trade, the, the drugs that come into our, they don't, they come from, you know, as far away as China, you know, and they're, they're crossing the border and so we're dealing with a, with a quite a few different types of things like that and they don't know jurisdictional boundaries. They don't know state lines, you know, and so that's why these drug task forces are very important because they can go to and follow, and basically follow the dope and make the arrests, you know, ultimately for the investigation. As far as what we're seeing, certainly starting to see some fentanyl in our area and that's, that's something that we have to deal with. Heroin has become an issue and we're, you know, we're Narcan-ing people on a, I don't want to say regular basis, but we are now seeing that even in our jurisdiction, we've, we've used Narcan several times. Just look at our lifesaving awards and you can see that that's happening. Marijuana is not an issue as much as it used to be. Now, it is illegal federally, but I can tell you that, that is not the priority of the DEA. They are looking at, you know, the hard illicit drugs, fentanyl, cocaine, heroin, things like that, and of course, ever-present methamphetamine, still an issue, still coming from the south across the border. So, that's kind of what we're dealing with as far as the types of drugs and we are seeing, you know, things that we thought we wouldn't see here, but we are, we're seeing it.
Yeah, it was a little disheartening to see Narcan as for sale at Walmart. I didn't realize that was a thing, but that's when you know that there's some serious issues going on. But, any other questions?
I was just kind of curious about like the training, like how long we thought an officer would be pulled and, and training only or do they think it's kind of pulling an officer that's experienced enough that they're going to not hit the ground running but pretty quick or?
We'll have a process to pick the right officer for the position. Not, not everybody who wants to do it can do it and so it takes a unique officer, it takes a certain skill set to be a part of that, to do the drug investigative work, especially undercover drug investigations. So, we will have a process. We'll pick the right person. They have to go through an extensive background check. That's about a four-month process with the federal government, so once you're vetted by the, by the DEA, you will, our officer will carry our commission, but they will also carry the full weight and authority of the DEA and so they'll make, they'll be considered much similar to DEA agent with federal credentials as well. So, as far as training the person, we're looking for somebody that, that brings a little bit of experience, you know. They don't have to be totally experienced because there is on-the-job training, but that's, I think, part of the, the thing that attracts officers to it is because they know they're going to get some great training, they're going to get, become highly experienced and have a really high level proficiency in drug investigations whenever they get through this, this assignment.
And then, Chief, if you don't mind, touch on the plan to backfill.
Plan to backfill? Yeah. You know, that's always an issue, so we have looked at our staffing and we know that, you know, once you take a person off the road, that's one less person that's going to be able to take a call for service. That is concerning to us. I mean, we're down already, but you always, again, I, I always have to look at, you know, and weigh out, you know, the, to pass up this opportunity, it may not come around again and so we're willing to, you know, go run a little short in operations until we can back, backfill that, but we had already talked about approaching the council in the second quarter with potential additions of officers as we start evaluating the sales tax money coming in and so this would be addressed at that time. I would just... is on-the-job training, but that's, I think, part of the thing that attracts officers to it, is because they know they're going to get some great training, they're going to get, become highly experienced, and have a really high level proficiency in drug investigations whenever they get through this assignment.
And then, Chief, if you don't mind, touch on the plan to backfill.
Plan to backfill? Yeah. You know, that's always an issue, so we have looked at our staffing, and we know that, you know, once you take a person off the road, that's one less person that's going to be able to take a call for service. That is concerning to us, I mean, we're down already, but you always, again, I always have to look at, you know, and weigh out, you know, to pass up this opportunity, it may not come around again, and so we're willing to, you know, go run a little short in operations until we can backfill that, but we had already talked about approaching the council in the second quarter with potential additions of officers as we start evaluating the sales tax money coming in, and so this would be addressed at that time. I would just try to do it at that time, whenever I'm proposing those additional personnel.
So I want to understand this correctly, this person will no longer work day-to-day for the city of NIXA in town, every day they'll report to the DEA office for?
Yeah, so that, generally speaking, yes, they're going to be working, and they'll get their case management and assignments from the DEA rack. They will be assigned to a supervisor here and be required to check in on a regular basis. Of course, we still are responsible for their commission, their training, things of that nature, so they, they won't be, it's not like we send them away and never see them again, so they'll be at the office checking in on a regular basis, but day-to-day operationally, they'll be working at the DEA office.
And where I was going with this is, I'm looking at the salary part of that, I mean, are we, this is what the grant money affords, are we giving more money towards that salary as well? Because the standard salary is less than what we're paying our officers now, so how do they get compensated?
So, in years past, the DEA, TFO positions were fully, like, fully funded, they would, whatever the salary was for that officer, you got that. The federal government's not able to do that anymore, so the package that they've presented with us is the best package, this is the same package they give across the entire country for a task force officer. But that is part of the skin, we have the skin in the game, so to speak, in there, so when we're sending them up there, we're getting partial reimbursement, we're not getting 100% reimbursement, so the city is, there's some outlay for that uncovered portion of its salary.
Okay.
The benefit, or the overtime line is substantial, so whoever ends up in this position stands a chance to make a lot of money, honestly, because of the amount of overtime, that's, I don't, it's, well, it is expected, to be honest with you, because you do work a regular work week, but you're subject to be called when the need arises, because you're on the drug dealer's time, not office hours.
Right. Okay, I just was trying to make sure I understood how they were getting paid, I didn't, because it doesn't say if we're going to leave them on their current salary, and this just helps offset that, or?
Yeah, it's just, it's just a reimbursement that helps offset that, and then, you know, as it kind of details out, some of the fringe benefits and fuel and things, those are some, the way they break it out, and so they're allocating that money, so.
Thank you.
So how often has the DEA operated inside the city limits of NIXA just in the past, I don't know, five years? Or a year, I don't care?
That's a good question. I can tell you that we just, they were down here two weeks ago.
If you got enough answer. So, the reason I was asking that is, do you think this will help with that communication between NIXA PD and the DEA on certain cases, like maybe NIXA will be more in the know on things that are going on by having someone on the inside?
Yeah, I mean, that's kind of what, you know, I was alluding to whenever you talk about the, you know, some of the exterior, the other benefits, you know, other than just the, you know, having the ability to, the resources is what I'm getting at, you know, the information sharing. If you remember, we were part of the Comet Drug Task Force. In the early years, that was a great benefit to us, and it was a great association that we made with them, and we were working with them on a regular basis. But in the past several years, that task force has really struggled to be effective, in my opinion, they've struggled with funding, and we weren't seeing the benefit to being part of that task force, where this certainly has a lot of, fulfills a lot of those past benefits that we had with the Comet Drug Task Force.
Any other questions? Thank you, Chief.
You're welcome.
All right, if there are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you would like to speak on this matter. All right, I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? Anything else from staff? All right, I will accept a motion.
So made.
First by Mr. Lucas, second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, moving on to Resolution 2024-19.
Resolution number 2024-19, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA authorizing the city administrator to solicit qualifications for engineering services related to the remodel of NIXA City Hall. Presenting is project facilitator, Justin North.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. So this RFQ will allow us to go out for architectural and engineering services to design the remodel for City Hall. In front of you is the concept for that, this is just a concept, but last December, this council approved $2.2 million for the remodel of City Hall, and there's a few reasons behind that. The first being the desire to bring utility billing over into the, into City Hall so that we can have a one-stop shop for most of city services. The other is the desire for improved supervision from the finance department, as it brings utility billing, or utility billing will take over the old court space, and this will kind of bring that department under one roof. During this process, we'll also be adding more office space to accommodate additional employees that have been hired, and council chambers will see an expansion, so we'll see more seating. This will allow for a wider range of events to be held at City Hall and can better accommodate public hearings, which at times have been standing room only. Throughout this process, we'll also be looking at our parking lot layout to try to maximize the space available to us. We'll be looking at our parking lot lighting and that as well. And then additionally, we'll be adding a utility billing kiosk somewhere outside of City Hall to allow for another way for citizens to pay their utility bills. This will be operational 24 hours a day, so that can accommodate anyone who wants to pay their bills outside of normal business hours. Should council pass this resolution, we'll go out for design services and hopefully have this project completed by the end of the year. Staff recommends the approval of this. Any questions?
This is still awkward, but.
[laughing]
Takes some getting used to. Any questions?
The main entrance will be moving as well, correct?
Yeah, the main entrance will be shifting to the middle, so basically, we're planning development entrances right now.
Thank you, Mr. Orff. Really wish it would have been something we haven't been looking at for, like, six months, because we could have really grilled him on that one. All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you would like to speak on this. And I will close the public hearing. Just to give all of you people in here kind of an idea of, like, a couple other reasons that we're looking into this outside of just utility billing, the safety of our employees is extremely important, and there's not a lot of security with this entrance and the people who deal with sometimes the most angry individuals, and it's a little unnerving at times, and so the new entrance will create a safer working environment for the people who deal day-to-day with members of the public, while also kind of creating more meeting space, because I know there's been some meetings where it's been, well, you can't even, like the last meeting, Travis had to stand up, so. But, things that are definitely needed. All right, no other questions? I will accept a motion.
So made.
Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Ogden. All in favor?
Aye.
All right, moving on, Resolution 2024-20.
Resolution number 2024-20, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Southwest Valuation LLC for property valuation services related to Main Street Expansion Project, presenting is street superintendent, Jeff Russell.
Mayor, Council, good evening. We finally reached the phase on the Main Street project, excuse me, from Tracker to CC, to start acquiring some of the right-of-way easements and temporary easements. Part of this process is to hire a valuation company to set those values on those properties so that we can begin those negotiations. A list of pre-approved companies are provided by the Department of Transportation. In that list, is Southwest Valuation, a company that the city has used itself and have had success with. They have provided a quote for this service for $25,000, and it is our recommendation to pass this resolution, giving them permission to start.
Perfect. Any questions? Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you would like to speak on this. Fair enough, I will close the public hearing. Nothing else, I will accept a motion.
Make the motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Ogden, a second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right. Next up, Resolution 2024-21.
Resolution number 2024-21, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA authorizing the city administrator to execute a contract with Norton Power Systems LLC for the purpose and installation of electric generators for wells 11 and 12. Presenting is water superintendent, Jason Stutzman.
Good evening. When we bought the RDE system and the Tuscany system, there is basically no backup electricity for them if electricity goes out. Until we can get them looped into our system where we can provide water when the well, or when the power is down, we are requiring, we are wanting to put some generators at each, at each location, so that when the power does go down, that they'll automatically start up and produce power so we can pump water, since well 11 and well 12 are the only wells for them systems, basically. Well 13 for RDE is just a little bitty two-inch well, and it will not support the system, even though it's on a different, with a different electrical company than well 11 is. I budgeted $70,000 for the generator at well 11, because it's a smaller well, I budgeted $100,000 for the well at Ashley Road on RDE through cooperative bid, Norton Powers come back with some prices for us. Well 11 come in at $75,790, which is about $6,000 more than what we budgeted, but well 12 come in at $96,220, which was below what the $100,000 that I budgeted, so after talking with Jennifer with the finance and getting Jimmy's approval, we're going to take some money, the leftover money out of well 12, put it towards well 11, and then I'll pay the, we'll pay the rest of it out of our wells and tower budgets, so Norton does a great job, they're already on a city contract for taking care of the rest of our generators throughout the, throughout the city, at Public Works and everything, so staff recommends Norton Powers for this project.
Any questions? Thank you, sir. All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you would like to speak on generators, because they are handy. I will close the public hearing. Nothing else, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion. Second.
First by Mr. Ogden, a second by Mr. Vess. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. All right, Resolution 2024-22.
Resolution number 2024-22, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA authorizing the city administrator to solicit qualifications for engineering services related to the construction of a new water tower. Presenting is water superintendent, Jason Stutzman.
This one here, this tower will be put over on Ashley Drive for the RDE system. Right now, we currently have a 250,000-gallon ground storage tank with a booster pump station, and personally, it's a piece of junk. It doesn't work half the time, and there's a lot of maintenance to it. So through our master, water master plan we done in 2023 with Olson, we have determined that a new hundred, or a new million-gallon composite water tower, similar to the ones that are out on Norton Road at well 10, and out at well 9, out there by High Point School will be constructed. Right now, we're just soliciting, or for qualifications for an engineering firm to design this for 2024, and then hopefully start this project in 2025.
I really wish you wouldn't sugarcoat things, Mr. Stutzman. Any questions? Thank you, sir. All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you would like to speak on this. All right, I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council or staff, I will accept a motion.
So made. Second.
First by Mr. Peterson, a second by Mr. Lucas. All in favor?
Aye.
Moving on, Resolution 2024-23.
Resolution number 2024-23, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA authorizing the city administrator to solicit qualifications for engineering services related to the construction of a new holding tank for the city's wastewater treatment plant. Presenting is water superintendent, Jason Stutzman.
It's me again, Margaret. The current sludge-holding basins that we have at the wastewater plant for NIXA was built in 2003. As you can see, we have two that are 160,000 gallons, we've got one that's 130,000 gallons, and then the main tank that we pull the land bio solids out of is 950,000. With, as NIXA grows and takes all our farmland away, we are forced to go out farther, which is less trips for the trucks, we can't do a turnaround as fast as we could when we had close land, and we're running the centrifuges as much as we can, but we're running out of room up there in the composting building, so we propose of a new sludge-holding basin that'll probably roughly be equal to 950 to a million gallons it'll hold. That way, we can store it during the winter time, and we can't get out on the fields, or like right now, we're, we are pretty much done hauling for right now, because hay season's coming on, and according to DNR, we have to stay off the fields a month before the farmers can cut hay, so we're pretty much just holding sludge and hoping it don't come out the top, basically. So, this resolution will be for us to get a whole, get with some engineering firms and decide who will engineer and design this project, basically.
Any questions?
How much is it going to cost to do this?
Last estimate I got was probably going to be close to a million, million and a quarter.
And we've got that money put aside? Okay.
Oh, yeah. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. No other questions, I will open up the public hearing, if you would like to speak on this. I will close the public hearing. Any other questions from council? All right, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
First by Ms. Graham, a second by Mrs. Morris. All in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. All right, Resolution 2024-24.
Resolution number 2024-24, a resolution of the Council of the City of NIXA authorizing the city administrator to solicit proposals for services related to the painting of water tower number six and number seven. Presenting is water superintendent, Jason Stutzman.
I'd like to get mine all done in one meeting, so I'd like to come back. As part of the strategic plan from 2000, or from 2021, we have, the strategic plan says that we need to update our towers and paint them, this will be the fourth year we've done this. The towers that we're going to do this year is water tower number six, which is out here on West Tracker by Inman School, and water tower seven, which is the big million-gallon composite out there at, by High Point School. is the big million-gallon composite out there at, by High Point School. Basically, they'll be washed and cleaned and painted gray, and the Nixa Utilities logo will go on the tower, on water tower number six on Tracker, and then on water tower seven at, by, or by Inman, by High Point School, we will put Nixa Utilities on one side in the school, mascot eagle on the other side, just like we did at the one at the high school football stadium.
Any questions?
Do we paint them, or do we hire a company to paint them?
We'll hire a company. I ain't got no one that'll climb no tower.
Are you volunteering?
Yeah.
It ain't going to look like that, but yeah.
Now, part of the strategic plan was that the water towers continue to look clean.
Yeah.
And so.
Updated, updated paint jobs. We were way behind with just block letters that says Nixa.
Yeah.
I think it'll look good.
So.
I just didn't know if, like, you know, art guys were going to be out there hanging from a crane.
Yeah. My dad used to do that, actually. Any other questions? Thank you, sir. All right. I will open up the public hearing. Just itching.
Scott, I think you lost that award this, this meeting.
I love that.
All right. If anyone else would like to speak on this. I will close the public hearing. Nothing else from council or staff, I will accept a motion.
Some aid.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, a second by Mr. Ogden. All in favor?
Aye.
Those oppose? Thank you. All right. Moving on, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-five, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the sale or distribution of alcohol on city property for the twenty-twenty-four Nixer Sucker, Nixa Sucker Days multi-day special event. Presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gaby.
Mayor, Council, good evening. I will try to drag this out so I can speak as long as I can. This is something for Nixa Sucker Days twenty-twenty-four. Section sixteen dash three two five of Nixa City Code does require that multi-day events, and events that are asking for permission to sell alcohol on city property requires council approval first. So the Nixa Sucker Days twenty-twenty-four is scheduled for March seventeenth through March nineteenth. The, the difference in this one is that they are requesting a larger beer garden area, or the space to where the beer can travel throughout the event. Number four on your screen is kind of the, the conflict with the code, where it requires a fence or area shall be provided with one entrance and one exit. The point of sale will still be on the city property where the parking lot is downtown, and then they are just hoping for approval to have people travel throughout the north part of the confines, which is kind of already has a natural barrier with the buildings. But there will be the barrier at fourteen. They will also provide a signage, or provide signage and a volunteer there to make sure, ensure that no alcohol leaves the area. There'll also be a similar setup at, on Main Street, or there at Elm Street. Again, the volunteer with signage ensuring that no alcohol leaves that perimeter. There is a map further down to kind of provide a little further explanation. Man, it's a good-looking map that I made. But again, the point of sale will be on the parking lot area that is owned by the city, where IDs will be checked to make sure that minors are not sold. And then the rest of it will be just where alcohol could travel. But again, they will have volunteers ensuring that none of it leaves that site. I believe the organizer is behind me if you have further questions.
Yeah, do I, Mr. Woodman, do we need to wait for the visitor's section to address the organizer, or, I want to make sure I'm following the procedure?
Yeah, they're not invited to speak, so, they're not invited to speak, so you'd have to wait till you open up the public hearing and then hear from them on this.
Okay. Perfect. I really don't have any questions for you.
Well, I think mine's going to turn into a question for the organizer as well, but my concern that I have with the barrier on the south end is the flow of people in and out of there. And anytime there's an emergency, what kind of barriers are those going to be? Because on the north end, it's usually concrete barriers, but on the, on the south end right here, if we put in concrete barriers, it's going to make it hard for emergency vehicles if necessary to get in there.
I'm guessing that's going to be another, like, entrance, exit spot in the fence with, we'll find out probably here in a minute whenever we talk to someone in the visitor's section.
The supplemental information does say that there, it will be just barriers. It doesn't specify specific types, so organizer can help out.
Gotcha.
Well, I have a problem with this because three or four, four or five of the kids' rides are in that area that you're talking about lying alcohol.
I'm not aware of the, the layout of what events will be in this area.
That was going to be one of my questions.
I mean, I don't know, I don't know what they are, but I know in the past, there's always been, the whole street all the way down, there's been rides for the kids, little kids especially.
And that was going to be one of my questions to, to Whitney, which is, are they, is this going to be more of like food trucks in that area and the rides further south, or, but again, that'll, Scott can't answer that.
I, I don't have that answer.
Okay. Any other questions for Scott, then I can open the public hearing. Thank you, Mr. Gaby.
Okay.
All right. I will open up the public hearing. If you would like to speak on this matter, please do so.
I would love to speak. My name is Whitney Gisson. I'm the organizer. I've never been called that before. It's very exciting. It's like a new title. I'll address some of the questions I heard fluttering around first, then you can just ask whatever you want. There will be kid rides all along there, just as there has been in the past. Kids have never been barred from going into the beer garden, so kids and drink, and alcoholic drinks always mixed in Sucker Days. Parents could bring their kids in. They obviously couldn't purchase alcohol in the past, nor will they be able to do that this year. The purpose of, oh, as far as barriers go, we would just expand the same kind of barriers, or the, the metal gates we borrow from the schools, not the concrete blocks for Elm Street. So as far as the purpose of this, I just kind of want to give a little context. We want to expand the, the beer garden mostly just to increase alcohol sales, which would support Sartoma more. They'd, they'd benefit more from this event, and in turn, be able to share that benefit with the chamber as far as sharing some of the cost of pulling off this event. Because it's, it's not cheap. It's kind of expensive to do Sucker Days with, not, not a lot of people might, may know that. But, so that's, we, we want to try it out and see what it looks like to expand the beer garden. Maybe we don't see an increase of sales, and it doesn't matter, right? But it, but the idea is if they can walk around with their kids, let their kids ride rides, then it's a more comfortable environment for parents to be able to drink, watch their kids ride rides. And obviously, the issue we were having in expanding it to the entire festival is just, there's no way to contain it once you go past Elm. So we thought this is a good little trial run to see if, because the buildings are a natural barrier, and we're only adding one extra exit versus, or, so it's two exits instead of one that we have to, we have to monitor, which is just a lot more doable than trying to monitor around the school's property, for example, or residential property that you run, run up against if you go past Elm. So what other questions do you have?
So you mentioned that you're going to have volunteers at those barriers to prevent alcohol going any further. How, how can, I know in the past, we've had officers at the main entries for the beer garden. Are we going to have officers there? Because...
We still requested the presence of officers there in that area.
Okay. I just, I can see that could go sideways by having someone like myself or anybody else, hey, you can't take that beer, and this guy's, you know, six times bigger than me.
I mean, I think with appropriate signage, as well as volunteers, you mitigate that, just like if you have alcohol sales anywhere, you have the risk of someone saying, peace, I'm out, you know? And that's exactly what they would say, I'm sure, if they were intoxicated. So I know there's been issues in the past, even outside the beer garden, down further of the street, people being intoxicated. So I'm not trying to pretend like this mitigates that, that anytime there's beer, beer sales or alcohol sales, you're going to have that potential issue.
Sure. Thank you.
So is there...
Do you have hours that, I can't remember, I'd go to Sucker Days, but we don't sell alcohol.
When?
All day, right? Or do they sell all day?
So in the past, it's been all day. Now, there was some talk of us limiting, limiting the hours of alcohol sales on Saturday, but if this passes, we would change that to make it all day on Saturday as well. Well, but, sorry, probably noon on, not like nine AM. Welcome to Sucker Days. But we were talking about changing it to a little bit later, because that, where the parking lot is at, is where the big top tent is with the stage. And in the noon hour to about four, we're going to have gospel music playing on that, that stage, and we thought it felt weird to have a beer garden going at the same time. But if it expands, it doesn't feel as weird if they're leaving with the alcohol and not sitting there. I don't know, you know? I, that was... I don't drink, so I don't really know what people think is normal, what's not, but, so depending on what goes on here, depends on the hours of, of the sales. Does that answer your question? It was not very specific. I apologize, because I don't know what y'all are going to do, so.
I just had one question about the ends of, of these, of the area. Is there just going to be like a, a single point as far as entrance and exit? So, you know, for people coming in and coming out, because I know that the, the volume of people sometimes is, is great, and if we narrow that space to come in, are we going to have people trying to walk around, or are we going to still be able to accommodate, like, the amount of people coming in and out?
So I imagine we would do it one of two ways, either have one entry and exit point that's larger, or two smaller ones, so there's still a barrier that slows people down, so you can obviously monitor who's coming in and out. The other thing to be aware of is we do have data from previous years, knowing when it's the busiest times of Sucker Days, and we can accommodate and plan for that, because we know that the busiest times of Sucker Days is one to three, for example, on Saturday. So if we know that's where the bulk of the people are coming, then we can make sure we have enough volunteers to man that area, knowing we're going to see a huge influx of people at that, at that point.
And the barrier, I guess, only has to be up during alcohol sales hours anyway, so you could always have that open and then close it when the alcohol sales start.
I guess my bigger question's actually for law enforcement officers, that, you know, are, do you, are you concerned by expanding like this to be harder to help control? I mean, I don't see as, necessarily saying we have to have somebody at every exit. I don't see that our responsibility as a city to put, to pay officers to stand at each exit. Is there, do you feel like that's going to be an issue?
So it's, it's a pros-con scenario. I would tell you that if you take alcohol and you can concentrate people into a small area, you tend to have problems because of that. So expanding it might give a little bit of space, so that people can kind of spread out. Maybe they're not on each other's nerves, or, you know, getting, getting sideways with one another. And, but I would also tell you that expanding it also is kind of problematic with control. And so when you have to add, you're essentially using the exact same methodology to control it. And so you do have the two points of entrance that you have to worry about. And so, you know, and then if you have a, from a staffing standpoint, you know, we, we would consider what, how many officers should be in a prescribed area depending on the size of it. So we would just reevaluate that. And, but I will tell you that from a safety standpoint, you do always have to consider whenever, in these scenarios, the egress, you know, and so you're, it's a larger area that you have to contend with if you do have an issue, and how you're going to get personnel or emergency equipment. And so we, we would have to, we'd want to consider that as well, you know, as far as in and out and egress, and, you know, if you had to move people quickly away from an area, if it's pinched down, for example, with barriers, and you're, you're limiting the, the flow of people, you're going to, it's going to take longer to get people out. And so pros and cons, of course, with any decision that you guys make. But, you know, we, we are flexible to some degree, and, you know, I, I mean, I feel like we could, we could potentially make it work, but I, I do see some other issues. So you might solve one and create one, so to speak. Does that answer your question?
Yeah. Yeah, I mean, my biggest concern about is, honestly, I don't want to put you guys, as the guys that help protect our city, keep our citizens safe, at a, make your job harder, I guess. That's would be my biggest concern. Creating a situation where you guys can't do your job well, or have your stuff in your way, you know, to do, to do your job. I mean, that's, would be my biggest concern on expanding it, because it's more of an area to watch, I guess. Does that make sense?
Yeah, absolutely.
Will Sir Thomas' trailer still be inside the big top tent?
The what?
Will the, the Sir Thomas' trailer, will it still be inside the big top tent?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Point of sale is the same place, yeah.
Are you expecting the, normally it was kind of pinched there pretty tight. Would that be open all the way across, or you still keep it kind of tight, open all the way across? Okay. And I know that all those businesses seem to be pretty pro-Sucker Days, but have you had conversations with, because they'll now have...
Not every single one of them.
Other stuff to deal with, I would think?
I haven't had, I haven't had a conversation with every single one of them. They all have heard me talking about expanding the beer garden to be larger. Mostly, the conversations I've had with them is, no, you cannot sell alcohol at Sucker Days, so.
That was going to be the next question?
Yeah.
We have, at this point, they're opening up in mid-April. I guess there's one restaurant that's looking to open that sells alcohol, plus the event center sells alcohol.
Right, but during Sucker Days, you can't invite people in, and then they can't walk out, having purchased alcohol from those vendors. Only Sir Thomas.
Is that accurate? They, they can truly go in and buy it, they just can't come out with it.
Well, if, I mean, Main Event Center doesn't sell alcohol during Sucker Days, they've never, they've never done that. I don't know about the restaurant on the corner, if they're having alcohol. I don't know.
Because Morning Day did.
Morning Day wasn't even open last year.
I didn't mean Morning Day, I meant Main Event Center. But the new pizza place is going in there, I don't know if they're going to have alcohol sales or not. Are they?
I'd imagine.
They're going in there.
I believe they've applied for one.
Okay, if they're, if they're open, we're not going to stop them from selling alcohol. But like, some of the other businesses that don't general, that they don't have liquor licenses, they've asked.
They don't have a liquor license, they wouldn't be able to sell.
They've asked us, and...
So the liquor license will only apply for their building. They, the alcohol wouldn't be able to leave the building.
Yeah, their liquor license.
If that's the concern, that the liquor license will apply to their building, it will not apply for them to take an out.
So the same rules.
Right.
Like any other restaurant.
My guess is it would be, it would be the same as Morning Day, which is back door to awning. And so you can sit out on the sidewalk.
But they could not take in your walk.
Under their awning, but as soon as you step outside of their awning, then you're breaking a law.
Right, it would only apply to the restaurant. They would not be able to walk.
But then if they put it in the same plastic cup that they...
Yeah. But, but that's, you know, be an adult.
Yeah.
I get it.
Yeah, I can't, I mean, I could stand in their awning, I guess.
You'd be busy that day.
I might be a little busy.
Right. Going to events in all of southwest Missouri, I haven't seen many other issues with places that have it way more open than it is at Sucker Days. Downtown Springfield, Ozark, all those, the areas fairly large. And kind of going back to what the chief said, spreading people out a little bit more. I mean, it's, it's kind of six in one hand, half a dozen in the other type of deal. It could be better, it could, I don't think it'll get any, can get worse. We don't have that many issues. We have some, but, but that would have happened regardless if it would have been the whole street or a small area, I think. So.
Any other questions for Mrs. Gisson?
Thank you.
Thank you. The visitor's section is still open if you would like to speak on this. Feel free to do so. All right. I will close the visitor's section. Anything else from council? Any other questions?
Yeah.
Or discussion? All right. Nothing else? I will accept a motion.
All right. Nothing else, I will accept a motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Lucas, second by Mrs. Morris, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed?
No.
Five yes, one no, motion passes. All right, moving on, resolution twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-six, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, authorizing the sale or distribution of alcohol on city property for the Rotary Club of Nixa's twenty twenty-four Party in the Park special event, presenting is Planning and Development Director Scott Gabby.
Mayor Council, good evening, this is, um, a similar situation, except it is not a multi-day event. Um, the Rotary Club is holding their fourth annual cornhole tournament. Um, the previous three years, it was held at McColey Park, um, adjacent, at the pavilion adjacent to, um, the swimming pool. Um, again, this is, there's a map further down, um, that kind of explains where they are, um, fencing in the area to make sure that it confirms, conforms with code. There is a, I swear there's a pretty cool map at the end. There we go. Obviously, the, the bar services and, and the ban are obviously gonna be contained within the pavilion, but then they'll have, um, the whole area open for, um, alcohol to travel within a, within the barrier. They are proposing a bounce house and some food trucks on the church property to the south. Staff is recommending approval as they have, um, conformed to city code, if you have any questions, I'm available.
Any questions?
So this is the property that's not part of Rotary Park, it's behind it?
No, it is on Rotary Park, um, it's kind of crossing, the, where the alcohol is, it's gonna be maintained on, or main, be only on our city property, Rotary Park property, um, the food trucks will be on the church property there in the parking lot.
Oh, okay, okay.
And they're fencing off the whole area.
That is what they have proposed, yes.
The only suggestion I would have is that they go ahead and put the fence to the other side of the food trucks. Because if someone's carrying a beer, are they really gonna stop right there at that line and set their beer down, go order from the food truck and come back?
They might be able to yell their order to them.
Oh, yeah, true. But, just a thought.
This is just a one day thing, right?
Or put a table over there for the beer to set while they go.
Put your name on your cup.
Yeah, there you go.
Hand up Sharpies, Matt.
This is just a one, one event.
He looked at me because I'm, I'm a part of the Rotary Club.
Yeah.
And so, um, yeah, I can take that suggestion back to them, um, that way, but maybe they can get their food and then go get their beer. I'm kidding.
Yeah, they could.
But, uh, but yeah, uh, we'll, we'll see what we can do there, I don't know that, um, the church wants alcohol on their property. So, we'll have to figure out how to mitigate that.
What's, what's the times on this, Matt?
The event, I believe, is, what do they have, from one until five? Was set up being earlier?
So it's not in the evening, it's just during the afternoon then?
It's just during the afternoon, that's correct.
Okay.
Any, any other questions for Mr. Gabby?
Did they indicate where the opening's gonna be in the fence, or how big it's gonna be?
Uh, they did not, again, this is, um, my version of their map, their map was, um, kind of hand drawn, and it did not include any openings. It'll be there somewhere.
They'll, they'll leave the opening, it, uh, is from, from the Rotary Park parking lot to the pavilion, and that'll be monitored then from that spot.
Call Mr. Kraus, the organizer for this one.
Thank you, Mr. Organizer. Thank you, Mr. Gabby.
Thank you.
There are no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. I will close the public hearing. Anything else from council? I will accept a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
First by Mr. Vess, second by Mrs. Morris, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Okay, last resolution, twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven.
Resolution number twenty twenty-four dash twenty-seven, a resolution of the council of the city of Nixa, ratifying the execution of a real estate purchase and sale agreement for certain real estate related to the west regional collection system, presenting is Assistant Public Works Director Travis Cossey.
Yeah, so tonight, we're gonna end the resolution section on a very positive note. If you'll recall, back in January, council passed an ordinance authorizing the condemnation of property necessary for the construction of a new regional lift station to serve southwest Nixa. Although that condemnation was filed, and we moved forward with, uh, the court proceedings for that, we never did stop negotiating with the property owners. Uh, I'm very pleased to announce that we have reached an agreement with those property owners for the purchase of the property necessary for the lift station. Uh, that agreement has been mutually beneficial for both parties, both the city and the landowner. So we have entered into a purchase agreement for the one acre needed for the lift station site. That closing is set up for, uh, April nineteenth. However, the resolution before you tonight would ratify the purchase agreement that city staff has entered into and authorize us to move forward with that closing that we do have scheduled. So I'd be happy to answer any questions you have regarding it.
Any questions? Yay. Thank you, Mr. Cossey.
Thank you.
A lot of work. All right, no other questions, I will open up the public hearing. And I will close the public hearing. If nothing else, I will accept a motion.
I'll make the motion.
I'll second it.
First by Mr. Vess, second by Ms. Graham, all in favor?
Aye.
Those opposed? Thank you. Real quick, uh, earlier, we mentioned the strategic plan, and on April eighteenth, I believe it's from noon to four, from noon to four, there is a strategic plan update, kind of overview, to go over all the stuff that was discussed, what we've accomplished, um, and then get the original member, the committee members back, um, to discuss that, I'm actually looking forward to that. I think it's gonna be a really good, really good time to get an update on all that. And without further ado, next up, we will have Kelly Morris.
Yay.
Um, who will be doing her liaison report for finance and human resources.
Did you guys get my PowerPoint?
Yeah, you do, yeah. You get to go present down there. It's just us.
Because the old kids don't wanna do it. We've already done it three times.
So for those of you in here who have not been through one of these, um, each council member, and you'll notice on the back of the agenda, each council member is a liaison for a certain department, um, within the city. And once a year, they give liaison updates, um, kind of what's going on in that department, um, anything new, exciting news, um, job role changes, stuff like that. And today, it's finance and human resources, by Councilwoman Morris.
Mayor and Council, hi. Uh, this is my first one ever, so bear with me. Um, I had the honor of doing human resources and finance, and I have to apologize to them because I was not a good liaison this year. I am sorry, because I really had no idea what I was doing, but I know now, so I will do better, I promise. There's Amanda. So our human resources department is Amanda Hunsucker and Christina Matney. I couldn't find a picture of Christina, so I'm sorry. I was peer pressured into doing that, by the way.
I hate transition.
So, just, I don't know why you're so against it, it's fun. Um, I got this from our website, just a quick overview of what the HR department does, they deal with all of our personnel policies, handles pay, classification issues, they coordinate benefits, they coordinate with the ADA, FMLA, um, all that fun stuff that I know a lot of people don't like to deal with, besides HR, so bless her. Um, right now, we have a hundred and eighty, fifty-eight full-time employees and fifty part-time employees, fifty-ish, she said. And then we've hired twelve full-time people between January and March, we've interviewed thirty-nine, but they've hired twelve. Thank you. They have added three new positions, the project facilitator, a assistant city attorney, and an executive assistant. I know we have the assistant city attorney filled, um, but I'm not sure about the project facilitator and the executive assistant. I'm sorry, I knew that, when I, when I made this, I didn't know that, but I know that now. Right now, currently, their biggest project is updating the policies and overhauling the personnel handbook between each department. That's the finish of HR. And now we're on to finance. There's our beautiful director, and then the rest of our staff, we're gonna get to their names in a minute. So here's all of our staff, we have Jennifer, and Lori, and Jenny, and Autumn, and Lisa, and Stephanie, and they are amazing. This is also from our city website, and all the wonderful things that they do. Uh, finance is also, the utility billing department is also financed, so here's also our wonderful employees of that department. Right now, they are transitioning to the new system, which, yes, we've had some issues, but it's getting better, um. They are also cutting down on the number of paper checks issued, it's the highest incident of fraud, and so we're gonna cut that down, it says going out by fifty percent. And we are establishing a finance ad, ad, adversity committee, so, that's in the works. And we have a pretty awesome finance department. The finance department has been awarded the certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the eighth year in a row from the Government Finance Officers Association for our annual com, compren. Yes, financial report for the fiscal year of twenty twenty-two, and they will be submitting the twenty twenty-three report in June. There you go. Any questions?
Why?
You're welcome.
Yeah, good job, I should have stared at the sun longer today. For those that don't know, I can't stand transitions on tire points, they drive me nuts. Okay, um, good job, thank you for the information, um, anything else from council? Anything else from staff?
Just I'll give you a quick update, um, a week ago Saturday, we had our annual Easter egg hunt, uh, great turnout, helicopter drop, uh, just, it, it was a great day, um, I think a thousand, thousand plus, uh, in attendance, it was just a, a very large event. Um, but, uh, they managed to clean up Easter eggs, it took us seven and a half, eight weeks to stuff. They cleaned it up in, what, five or six minutes combined, in all of the heat.
Absolutely insane.
It, it's insane, uh, but a lot of fun, thank you for those that came, uh, we do greatly appreciate you guys, uh, coming and, and supporting as well. Uh, now, also, if you haven't been by the pool, it's worth the drive, um, it's a mess, in a good way. Um, they, they are working through that, um, have torn up a lot of concrete, um, are getting ready to pour the, uh, area within the pool in this next week, week and a half, um, and then they'll get started with all the piping outside of the pool and replacing that. Uh, just for note, that the area inside the pool that we're elevating, uh, that concrete needs to sit for a minimum of thirty days before they can paint it. And so that's why it's important that they, and the, the starting point of the project is there, um, as they need to get that poured as soon as possible. The deck concrete, uh, can sit just a few days before we can start using that, and so, um, they're, they're moving right along, things are really progressing. Um, every day's a change out there, um, but if you've got time to drive by, um, it's worth the look. We'll be updating, um, our photos and things on websites and, uh, Facebook and things to keep everybody apprised of, of the progress.
Fantastic.
Thank you, Mr. Kraus, and thank you, you and your staff, the Easter egg hunt was, that was crazy. It just keeps getting bigger, so good job.
It was fun.
And I, I think I saw the lineup for your, for the Movies in the Park come out as well?
Yes, our lineup is out, uh, for Movies in the Park, uh, sponsored by the Madison Gale Group. We've got five movies slated through June through September, and so, uh, keep your eyes open on those, we're, we're showing a lot of great movies this summer.
So I'll give you an update on the election results, um, Mr. Lucas was elected to serve another term, Mr. Vess was elected to serve another term in the marijuana, sales tax did pass, we'll come back next meeting with the resolution to officially approve those results, once they get the certified, um, results from the county.
Thank you, Ms. Coffee.
Um, I wanted to give you a, a kind of an overview and a quick update on where we're at. I'm sh, with the, as far as the electric outage that we had Friday night, I don't know if all of you are aware, but we did have a rather large electric outage Friday night, I'm sure you received quite a few calls from it. What happened was, it was kind of a perfect storm event, City Utilities lost their feed into Nixa at their main, uh, power station up on James River. And we just so happened to have one of our four transformers down for maintenance right now. So when that happened, we were not able to backfeed the north side of town off of the Southwest Power Administration, uh, secondary feed coming in on the west side of town, which created a situation where we had a large amount of customers out of power. Fortunately, we were able to do a quick rerouting of our circuits and move that load from the north side of town to our downtown sub and get the lights back on rather quickly for all those affected customers. As of this hour, City Utilities is still working on the issue, and they have not restored power to that, uh, northeast substation. So I do want to commend your electric department, they have been working tirelessly since Friday evening to keep the lights on in this community, we are, uh, they have done a large amount of rerouting and load shifting to ensure that all of our customers remain in power while City Utilities works on their issues. So they, like I said, I, I can't commend them enough for, for their hard work and how much they've been able to do to keep all of our customers online and keep the, keep the lights on in a situation where we have two of our four substations down, and one of our two main feeds coming into town that are down, and the, and the customers are able to remain in power. So, so they have been working very hard, and I wanna make sure they're publicly acknowledged for that.
And then, uh, one last thing, um, the new fire station number one grand opening will be this Sunday, or be Sunday, the fourteenth, at two PM. So if you would like to attend that. This Wednesday, do you know what time that is, we need to start to put you on, eleven thirty? Thank you.
All right. All right, if there's nothing else, Amelia, thanks for coming tonight, hope you learned something. All right, if there's nothing else, uh, meeting adjourned. All right, if there's nothing else, meeting adjourned.